Are we ready to roll? All right, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call to order the October 5th regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council at 7:00 PM. We're in the forum at City Hall. First order on the agenda is roll call.
Roll call shows all seven city councilors are present.
And then the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item on the agenda is special order of the day and/or announcements. There are none officially, but unofficially, for those of you who are watching at home, at 7:30 you have something much more interesting to watch, and you should, you can get this on replay. You don't have to watch us live. So, we'll just let it go at that. Public hearings, four is, four A is a public hearing and proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for 1402 Townline Avenue, requesting a change from planned unit development to C2 neighborhood commercial. This is before the council for a first reading with a request to suspend the rules and proceed to action on the merits. There is a recommendation from the Plan Commission for approval 5-0. Ms. Christensen, could you give us the staff report, please?
In January 2003, the city council approved a planned unit development master land use plan and rezoning to PUD for a development consisting of fourteen duplex townhouses on property located at 1402 Townline Avenue. The PUD final site plan was never submitted, and according to the zoning ordinance, the previously approved PUD master land use plan has officially lapsed and is of no further force in effect. When this occurs, the zoning ordinance instructs the Plan Commission to remove the land from the PUD zoning district. Therefore, staff has submitted the application to rezone the property located at 1402 Townline Avenue from PUD to C2 neighborhood commercial. The C2 designation is consistent with the comp plan, which shows neighborhood commercial uses for this property. Staff notified the property owner of this proposed action on September 1st. The property owner contacted staff on September 23rd, but did not express any opposition to the proposed change. He indicated that he may propose a different two-family development in the future, and if he does intend to pursue that two-family development, he can still subdivide this parcel and seek a conditional use permit to allow the duplexes. Several neighbors have contacted staff and others attended the Plan Commission meeting. The neighbors have different opinions regarding the best use of the land. Some are opposed to two-family and multifamily. Some are concerned that the, would prefer the approved two-family development over the commercial uses, and there were also complaints expressed at the Plan Commission meeting about the hauling of concrete and dirt onto the site, and we have followed up with the owner on that particular issue. And Plan Commission held a public hearing on September 23rd and voted unanimously 5-0 to recommend approval of the rezoning.
All right, thank you, Ms. Christensen. I'll open the public hearing on a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for 1402 Townline Avenue from planned unit development to C2. Does anyone wish to appear and speak on that issue? Does anyone wish to appear and speak on the issue of a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for 1402 Townline Avenue, requesting a change from planned unit development to C2? And lastly, does anyone wish to appear and speak on the proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for 1402 Townline Avenue, requesting a change from planned unit development to C2? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to waive the rules and proceed to action on the merits. Is there such a motion?
Um, we've changed the rules for a second reading.
All right. Mr. Forrest and Mr. Haynes, any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very well, is there a motion to approve the proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map?
Move to approve.
All right, Mr. Haynes and Ms. Johns, again, any council discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very well, motion carries 7-0. Next item on the agenda is citizens' participation. Does anyone wish to address the council this evening? I haven't received any written documentation that they do, but if they do, please step forward. All right, doesn't look like there's anyone. We'll proceed then to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point. This evening, the consent agenda consists of only one item, item A. And quite frankly, in my five years plus on the council, I think this is the first time we've had only one item on the consent agenda. So, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Levy and Mr. Noonam, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very well, motion carries 7-0. Item number seven is ordinances. 7A is proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for 1543 and 1546 Henry Avenue, 1677 and 1681 Sherman Avenue, and 1552 and 1626 Summit Avenue, from M2 General Manufacturing District to M1 Limited Manufacturing District. This is before the council for a second reading. Then there was approval by the Plan Commission 4-0. Ms. Christensen?
These six properties are located in a small industrial pocket along the Iowa-Chicago and Eastern Railroad line on the near east side of the city. The staff actually requested the rezoning of these properties. The majority of the surrounding properties are located in a single-family residential district, and staff feels that changing the zoning district to M1 Limited Manufacturing District may protect the surrounding single-family neighborhood from possible future intense land uses on these properties. The existing land uses on all six properties are permitted in both M1 and M2 zoning districts, and the proposed zoning change will not cause the uses of any of these properties to become legal nonconforming to the existing zoning ordinance. We're proposing the change not to limit the business and industrial opportunities for the property owners, but to protect the integrity of the surrounding single-family neighborhood by not allowing more intense uses on the properties. Only two uses which are currently allowed in M2 are prohibited in M1, and they are waste-related uses and adult uses. Another limitation by rezoning it is the amount of outdoor storage. In M2, it is 25 percent of the lot area, and in M1, it is 10 percent. A number of land uses are currently prohibited in M2, but would be allowed or conditional in M1, such as community service, retail sales, college uses, repair-oriented retail sales and limited vehicle service. Plan Commission did hold a public hearing at its meeting on September 9th and recommended approval of the request. United Stars Industries, Inc., the property owner of 1543 and 1546 Henry Avenue, has submitted a zoning protest petition opposing the change in zoning for those two properties. Therefore, favorable vote of at least three-fourths of the city council members present and voting on the matter shall be required to approve the application.
All right, thank you, Ms. Christensen. Is there a motion to approve 7A?
Could move that we approve 7A.
All right, Mr. Dench, Mr. Levy, discussion? I guess I have one question and one point. Apparently, other than filing the objection, the owners of 1543, 1546 Henry have not appeared at the Plan Commission. They didn't appear at our first reading of the hearing, and they're not appearing tonight. Has anyone had any contact, or have you had any contact, Ms. Christensen, with them? Are they still objecting to this, or do we have any updated information, or should we just assume they're still objecting, they just haven't appeared?
I believe they're still objecting. I mean, we did have somebody interested in the property who is actually going through the due diligence on one of the two properties, and they expressed concern with the protest petition to the owners, and the owners just stand firm that they really want the M2, not the M1, but they have not shown up to any of the meetings.
All right, Ms. DeForest?
I just wanted to check with you for emphasis, though, that the staff feels this classification is important to protect that it's surrounded entirely by single-family residential homes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any additional councilor questions or comments? Mr. Casper?
Mr. President, I think I should mention that despite the lack of the company's presence at the prior proceedings here, and a supermajority vote is still applicable.
And if my arithmetic is right, that's six of the seven this evening. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any additional councilor questions or comments? All right, there's been a motion and a second. I'll call a question. All in favor of 7A, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very well, the motion carries 7-0. 7B is a proposed ordinance to establish no parking regulations on Washburn Street. This is before the council for a first reading with a request to suspend the rules and proceed to action on the merits. Matter has been reviewed by the Traffic Review Committee with a recommendation for approval 6-0. Mr. Botts, can you give us the staff presentation, please?
This request was brought forward to the staff to remove the parking along Washburn Street, just east of Park Avenue because of the new business that's moving in there was popular, and people were parking along the road. And local residents were concerned about being able to see when he moved out on Park Avenue, so the request was brought to the Traffic Review Committee, was reviewed. The staff looked at the situation out there, found that there was ample off-street parking for both businesses, and felt that the on-street parking wasn't needed. And with that, they make, the staff made a recommendation to the Traffic Review Committee. The committee reviewed it. As noted, they voted 6-0 in favor of supporting the removal of parking, on-street parking for that location. And with that, it's being brought to the council for their consideration to adjust the index of special locations to allow for no parking in that location.
All right, thank you, Mr. Botts. Is there a motion to waive the rules and proceed to action on the merits this evening?
So moved.
Mr. Levy?
Second.
And Mr. Dench. Counselor questions or discussion on?
I just have one question.
Ms. Johns?
Were there any residents or property owners on Washburn that were concerned about the no parking ordinance?
That's where the request came from, an adjacent property owner. And neither, both of the properties, you know, that are adjacent to this area were contacted and did not come to the Traffic Review Committee to voice their concerns, or contacted our staff, but the request came from a neighbor who said it's hard to get in and out because of the parked cars.
Thank you.
Any additional questions on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very well, motion carries 7-0. Is there a motion to approve the proposed ordinance establishing a no parking regulations on Washburn Street?
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Noonam and Mr. Haynes, again, any further councilor discussion or questions? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very well, motion carries 7-0s. Item number A of the agenda is appointments. There are none this evening. Number nine, councilor activities and upcoming events. Mr. Noonam, could you start us this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I had an opportunity to attend the Beloit Memorial High School Purple Knights Homecoming Parade on Friday. The weather was not in our favor, but the student spirit was as high as ever. It was very impressive. And Principal Jenkins started a new thing. There was a horse in the parade this year, if you didn't have a chance to see it, and he's calling it putting the knight back on the horse. And the students were all fired up, and even though the score wasn't fully char-liking, I would say that it was a win for the community and the students. It was great. I also had a chance to attend the Beloit Civic Theater performance of Ruthless. I was very impressed. It was very funny, well-executed, a lot of new faces in the cast this year, and so hats off to them, and it's so great to have so many people support this great civic endeavor that they have been performing and producing for, I think it's 75 years now, our community. So, very good. And just a last note, Greg Wallandall and his team that are trying to still raise money for their trip to Scotland, and they were out there still trying to be entrepreneurs and find creative ways to raise money. It's going to be a community effort, and so thank you to everyone that continues to support them. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Johns?
I'll pass tonight. He covered it for me.
Mr. Haynes?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Levy?
Nothing.
Mr. Dench?
Uh, nothing.
Mr. Forrest?
I would just like to share that I was very privileged to attend the firefighter honor guard awards ceremony this past week with Councilor Johns and with President Van de Bogart, and really touched by the stories of the residents whose lives were literally saved by our incredible firefighter EMT staff. I just wanted to publicly thank them again for the incredible competent work that they do, and would like to thank Chief Liggett for his outstanding leadership of the department. And there's nothing more touching than seeing someone whose life has been saved be able to give that lifesaving award to the paramedic that saved their life, and it was a really incredible event, and I was honored to be able to take part in that, so, thank you.
All right. I've got a couple things. First, thank you to the people who have participated in up to now and who will in the future participate in the Big Reed project that's been going on at the library and at the college and at various forums around the community. Next week, on the 19th, or excuse me, not next week, but a couple weeks, on the 19th, we're going to have an all-day budget review session at the library, and I would invite citizens who are interested in seeing the process unfold, attend that. It's an open session if you wish to do so. I don't know that you'll have the opportunity to speak, but certainly you'll see what we're learning and going through as we work with preparing the budget. And lastly, I had the opportunity on the 25th of September to participate in the welcoming ceremonies for inaugurating the 11th president of Beloit College, Scott Bierman, and the opportunity to say a few words welcoming him to our community, and I appreciated that opportunity, and it was a well-attended session at Eaton Chapel. So, welcome President Bierman, and that's all I have this evening. The next item is city manager's presentation. Mr. Botts, A is a change in how we pick up our stuff.
Well, just a portion of you. We've been evaluating the number of stops we make at each, on each day, and part of the exercise is to try to determine how to balance out the number of stops so that we don't overload one day and have a lower day, a different day. The areas, these are all broke up by days. The area that's out on, well, it doesn't show up in that color, does it? The purplish color, out on the north-east side of town, all that area out in there is a Friday. And as you can see, it's pretty well spread out, and has approximately 2,600 stops we make. Just for, as an example, on Monday, which is the red color down in the lower left-hand corner, also has 2,600 stops, but you can see it's more condensed, and so it's easier to pick up that number of stops. Tuesday, which is the yellow color, just right above that, is about 2,500 stops. And then Wednesday, which is the greenish color, is split into two days, and that has roughly 2,300 stops. And Thursday, which is the blue, is 2,100 stops. So, on Friday, what we're looking to do is to take the Morgan Terrace area, which is, this thing doesn't, right there, by Milwaukee Road, Turtle Creek, Cranston area, is the area that we're going to take and move over, so it'll be picked up on Thursdays. So, the reason why we pick an area like that, because it's all self-contained, there's nobody across the street from you that's going to have a different trash day than you, and it can be all moved, so it'll be picked up on Thursdays rather than Fridays. And that's about 200 stops in there, so it helps balance out the number of stops between Friday and Thursday. Our plan is, at this point, is to send a letter out to all the properties that are in that area, notifying them of the change. The point, at this time, we're planning on making the change, that first Thursday, your trash will be picked up, that area will be the 22nd of October. Your normal day would have been the 23rd, but it'll move to Thursday, it'll be the 22nd. So, that's a little bit over two weeks away, and we'll send a letter out to all the properties this week, or first part of next week. Shortly after that, a door hanger will go on all the properties indicating that your trash day will be moved to Thursday. Why don't you hit the next button? This is what it'll look like. It'll move over from that area, move over to Thursday. And you'll get a door hanger saying that your trash is going to be picked up on Thursday, the 22nd, instead of Friday, the 23rd, and then we'll be continuing to work with people who don't get the message, because if we go, we'll go through the area, see if trash is still being put out on Friday, and we'll work with those folks to remind them that we want them to put out on the Thursday. So, the intent is not to try to punish anybody for putting out the wrong days, but to just try to get the change over, because it'll make it easier on our collectors to balance out the number of loads they pick up on those various days. And that's basically it. Anybody have any questions about what we're proposing to do?
Mr. Forrest?
Thank you, President. I just want to make sure for the public's behalf and information, I'm assuming that the Department of Public Works will give residents some time to catch up with the learning curve here, and we won't be issuing tickets for a number of weeks. Is that correct?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, like I said, you know, the intent is to punish anybody. We want to work with everybody, get them corrected on the right day, but continue to pick up their trash for a couple months later on the wrong day. You know, we want to get them moved over and get them moved over as quickly as possible. And typically, you know, when somebody does something wrong, we give them the red sticker, and that draws attention pretty quick. They call in, ask what happened, and we say, well, you know, you got the notifications, or did you get notifications that your trash day has been changed? And hopefully, you're talking to somebody who'll be responsible enough to remember the next week that they need to, you know, put it out the different day. And so, we'll use that methodology to help train people.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Botts.
Thank you.
Our next item is 10B, is the presentation of proposed 2010 operating budget, operating library and capital budgets. Mr. Arft?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a few introductory comments before I introduce Mr. Yark, who will walk through the presentation. We have been very busy with this budget for over four months. This is certainly the most difficult budget process I've undertaken as city manager in Beloit, and probably one of the two or three most difficult in my entire career, which is pushing on towards 37 years of being a city manager. The economy, the state budget restricted, reduced state shared revenues, restricted the property tax levy. We've suffered a number of our local revenues from fees and charges are down in large part because of the economy. Interest earnings, that used to be a significant revenue source in the general fund, literally have dried up. In addition, we took a hit in our group healthcare plan this past year. We had higher-than-anticipated claims, and there was simply no way that we could go another year without increasing our premiums, which, most of which, of course, are charged to the city's general fund. So, we had multiple problems layered on this year, and our biggest problem, of course, was the general fund. We had a preliminary meeting back in June, I believe it was. We had a workshop in September. We previewed a lot of the numbers you're going to see tonight. We've made a few more changes since that preview in September, most notably to restore funding for the municipal swimming pool. Even those you're going to see, we had to use fund balance because there is no revenue available to pay for that. The budget is still a work in progress. We're still getting updates from State Department of Revenue. We have the early retirement incentive program still underway, and we're waiting for a number of people to comment on that. As you know, we've been attempting to renegotiate the labor contracts with all the city bargaining units. The APSME locals representing our office and general employees, as well as our labor and trade employees, have approved a salary freeze for next year, which obviously helps the budget preparation process immensely. We're still in negotiations with the public safety bargaining units, and hopefully we'll have more information by mid-month. So, I want to emphasize that what you're going to see tonight are the numbers as they set today. Work is continuing. The next big date, as you're going to see, is the 19th. We have a full-day workshop, and then after that, hopefully, we can begin to get the budget into final form. But I think at this point, I'd like to introduce Paul Yark. He's going to walk you through and show you some of the key numbers and talk a little bit more about the workshop on the 19th. Paul?
Thank you, ma'am. It's my pleasure to introduce to the council and also the public citizens of Beloit this evening, the proposed budget for the city for 2010. Starting off, I'd sort of like to highlight some of the objectives that we used in order to prepare the budget. We have reviewed these somewhat with the council previously in the September workshop that we have. But some of the things that we really strived to accomplish preparing the budget, obviously qualifying for the expenditure restraint program, that is almost a half million dollars in revenue that we receive from the state each year by qualifying for that. We certainly want to prioritize our tax revenues to cover the costs of our core services that we provide, primarily in the city's general fund. The tax, property tax levy is the second-largest source of revenue in our general fund, and it certainly goes a long way to fund a lot of the services that we provide the citizens of the city. Our revenue projections, we certainly use historical data, but this year was pretty challenging. We also had to modify historical data that we were working with to reflect the current economic times. As Larry indicated, you know, we are seeing revenue reductions in a number of areas, particularly our interest earnings that we earn on investments, that had a significant impact on the city's operating budget for next year. So, we did, even though we did have the historical data, we did certainly modify that to reflect the reality of the economic situation we're in. We certainly want to try to maintain the lowest tax rate that we possibly can, but, you know, we are constrained somewhat in revenue sources that we have available to us. As I indicated, the property tax levy is a huge funding source for our city's general fund. We do obviously have some statutory limitations that we have to contend with as far as our property tax, but we did try to maintain the lowest possible property tax levy within the legislative guidelines that we could. We also made it a point to minimize the amount of fund balance that we were using for next year, and as you'll see later in the slides, there's a very modest amount that's being used next year to help fund the general fund budget. Just to summarize the budget to highlight some of the main points, the total budget for next year is proposed at $91.9 million. This is actually a decrease from the 2009 budget of almost $12 million, 11.43 percent. The reason for this reduction is primarily because of reduced capital projects that we have for next year. We have some, a couple of very major projects that are underway in 2009 that will not be recurring next year. So, our capital improvement budget for next year is $14 million less than the current year. The general fund budget, $29.6 million, is actually almost equal to the current year's budget, it's a slight decrease, about $50,000 of a decrease from 2009. We made certainly a considerable effort to try to minimize budget growth as much as we possibly can, and we have a slide coming up here that outlines some of the cuts that we had to make in order to get the budget balanced for next year. When we first started out back in early summer, we had what we called our baseline budget. That originally came in at a deficit of $2.6 million, and we were able to make up that deficit with a combination of reduction in expenditures, as well as some revenue enhancements that we'll review in detail later. Our enterprise fund budgets are decreasing next year by about $1 million. That's a 5.5 percent reduction over the current year budget. So, I think it's sort of telling to note that on our major operating funds, that we're actually spending money, or proposing to spend less money next year than the current year budget. Just briefly, I want to review the fund balance policy that the city has. We do have a formal policy as far as the general fund. We've reviewed this a number of We've reviewed this a number of times. It's basically 15% of operating revenues or three months of expenditures, whichever is greater. In most cases, the three-month expenditures is the number that we try to maintain. As you can see, the 2010 estimated three-month expenditures is about $7.4 million and that's about how much fund balance that we have. We ended 2008 with a fund balance of about $7.5 million. And we're proposing to use $86,000 of that as a funding source for the 2010 budget. This slide here is just, sort of runs you through the calculation of how we determine that number. And again, it sort of gives you some of the detail of how that number is calculated. This next slide is a summary slide, which sort of highlights the city's budget from an operating standpoint, what we propose to spend in our internal service funds and lastly, our, excuse me, our capital improvement budget that's scheduled for next year. I think it's interesting to note that with the exception of our debt service and special revenue funds, which we have really little control over as far as how much we need to spend in those two areas, our two main operating funds, the general fund and the enterprise funds, again, we're actually planning to spend less money next year than in the current year. The internal service funds are primarily the city's health insurance fund and some other insurance funds that we have, the health insurance being the most significant of that group. We are anticipating a 20% increase next year in our health insurance costs. That's about half of what our consultant has recommended, that we increase our insurance premiums. Obviously, it was unaffordable to go the full extent of the increase that they recommended. We did fund 20% of that, which is really all we could afford to do next year. And our capital improvements budget for next year at $13.3 million, again, is about almost $15 million less than the current year. This sort of gives you a lot of detail on the general fund operating budget for next year. Again, the total proposed budget, $29.6 million, and this gives you an itemization of the revenues that are anticipated to fund that budget. Certainly, the one major one I'd like to point out is the intergovernmental aids and grants. We receive almost, well, $19 million each year and most of that is coming from the state of Wisconsin in various aid payments that we receive, the biggest of which is the state shared revenue payment, which is over $16 million. Most of you probably heard that when the state budget was approved this last spring, the state actually cut our state shared revenue by about $152,000. So this amount is, reflects that. As you can see, there's about a $224,000 reduction next year anticipated in the state aid payments that we expect to get in. Overall, our total revenues are increasing only $49,000 next year. On the expenditure side, the two largest departments that we fund in our general fund are our public safety departments, the police and fire departments. They alone make up about 2/3 of the total cost of the general fund operating budget. These are some of the cuts that were proposed to balance the general fund budget from our baseline budget that we originally came up with. The largest cut that we're recommending is the wage freeze for 2010 for all city employees. For next year, we had scheduled in our labor contracts, an increase of 2.5% for all the represented employees and normally the non-represented employees also receive the like increase. Next year, we're recommending a 0% increase for everyone. There are five positions in the general fund that are scheduled to be eliminated, being a city hall custodian, a part-time position in the police department that assists the crime stopper organization. There's an inspection official in the public works department, a maintenance worker in the parks department, and a parks secretary. There are several other smaller cuts in the budget. Some of the more significant ones are, we have transfer payments that we make in each department to our vehicle in computer replacement funds and we use those funds each year as a funding source for those vehicles that are scheduled for replacement the upcoming year. The city's funded this for a number of years. We do have quite a significant amount of money built up into that fund that should be sufficient to handle our replacement vehicles that are scheduled for next year, but we are suggesting that we eliminate transfers into those funds next year for several city departments and the savings is about a half a million dollars by doing so. The total cuts that we're proposing is about $1.6 million. On the revenue side, to balance out the $2.6 million that we needed, we're looking at several different sources. The first one being recouping some tax levy that the city was authorized to implement two years ago, but we did not. It's about $150,000 that we can add to the city's tax levy next year to recapture levy that we did not levy for two years ago. The city receives, as most of you know, the so-called wheel tax. That's a $10 fee that people, our citizens, pay each year when they renew their vehicle registrations. In the past, the city has earmarked those funds in our capital improvement program and used that for street repaving projects. We're suggesting for next year to place that money in the general fund and use it for street maintenance in our public works department, which, by the way, is an appropriate use of those funds per state statute. Every year, we look at our various fees for services that we provide. We typically each year adjust our parks and leisure service fees to reflect the cost of providing those operations. And next year, we are recommending various increases at total almost $11,000 next year. We also do the same thing with our code enforcement and fire inspection services and we're proposing fee increases in both of those areas for approximately $16,000 next year. The one big item is the repayment of some TIF advances in our TIF number six and 12 tax increment districts. And we're actually closing our tax increment district number three this year. And by doing so, we have some excess increment that's been collected in that district and as part of that closure, we're permitted to reallocate that excess increment to the various taxing jurisdictions and the city will receive almost $200,000 of increment, you know, as a part of that closure. And lastly, the fund balance that we're proposing to be applied is about $86,000. Total revenue enhancements of a little bit over $1 million for next year. This graph just sort of gives you a breakdown of the various revenue sources, not only dollar-wise, but percentage-wise. And again, as you'll notice, the biggest, you know, piece of the pie comes from the state of Wisconsin at $19 million, which is 2/3 of our general fund operating budget. On the expenditure side, again, this graph provides some insight as to where all the money is being spent. As I said earlier, police and fire are the two big areas in the city's general fund, the next being the public works department. Finance follows at about $3.3 million. Again, the total budget, $29.6 million for next year. This next slide, got a lot of numbers on there. These are all our special revenue funds. Most of this are the city's tax increment districts. And most of these expenditures in the tax increment districts really are for debt service payments. So there's really little more that can be done within those budgets other than just making our debt payments for various projects that have occurred in the past. We do have some projects scheduled in the CIP for tax increment district five, number 10 and 13 next year. Also part of the special revenue funds is our budget. It's considered a special revenue fund. The library budget next year is proposed at a little bit over $2 million, which is an increase of about 2%. And then as Dave indicated just prior to this, our solid waste collection program is also considered a special revenue fund because we do charge fees for those services and that budget is scheduled to increase next year about $132,000 to 2.4 million. And the biggest reason for that increase is because the state imposed increased tipping fees on the city for this year and that's costing us about $120,000 more because of that than the current year, 2009. So we have to reflect those increased costs to our customers and that will result in a slight increase in the user fee for next year being proposed. Our enterprise funds, outside the general fund, these are some of our primary operating funds. This is the water sewer utility funds. Our cemetery is considered an enterprise operation as well as our ambulance and mass transit operation. Most of these are funded solely from user fees that we charge. You know, for example, the water sewer bill everybody gets each month, that's what's used to pay for the water and sewer services. None of those are tax-supported, so nobody's property tax bill is used to support our water and sewer utility operations. The transit system does receive some tax support and previously, the ambulance fund did, and that's now self-supporting. The cemetery and golf course operations are also self-supporting currently. The internal service funds, I did mention, that's primarily our insurance operations. We do also have our fleet management department set up as an internal service fund, so each department that receives the benefit of those services is charged a fee that's used to help fund this operation. The health insurance, next year, we're looking at over a million-dollar increase in health insurance costs, total budget of about $8.3 million. The debt service reserve, our debt service fund, again, this is set up to meet our obligations on our long-term debt, interest and principal payments that are due each year. There's about a 21% increase in that. The city has increased some debt the last couple of years, particularly for the library that increased the cost of our debt service payments that are due. This is funded not only from the property tax levy, but also from our tax increment districts. That's principally the other financing source that you see there. That's money coming in from the tax increment districts to fund debt associated with the improvements that have been made within those districts. And finally, our capital budget for next year. Total capital budget, $13.3 million. $10.7 million of that is actually for the capital improvement projects. The remainders are equipment replacement monies that are scheduled for motorized vehicles and there's also a little bit of money in there for computer replacements for next year. I would like to point out that's a reduction of over 52% for next year. This is the proposed property tax levy for 2010. We are proposing an increase of almost $876,000 next year, about 7.4%. The tax rate at that level would increase from $7.46 per thousand, I'm sorry, $8.79 per thousand to $8.83, or $8.079, I'm sorry, to $8.83 per thousand. That's an increase of about 75 cents and what that would mean is if a property owner in the city had a house valued at $100,000, they would pay $75 more next year in property tax as a result of this increase. This is a graphic presentation of the property tax rate. As you can see, there is, you know, the 75 is an increase graphically, how that appears compared to the last four years. That certainly is one of the more significant increases that the city's had in recent history. The next slide is our tax base growth. I think the city was fortunate, we really sort of broke even last year as far as our property tax base is concerned. Our equalized assessed value, which is the blue line or the blue bar, actually increased slightly compared to 2009. The state actually comes up with that number. That's not a number that the city generates. The yellow bar, which is the actual assessed value, is a number that the city determines each year as part of the property assessment process. There was a slight decrease in 2010 as a result of that. The estimated, or the assessed value next year is about $1.7 billion. The average residential house in the city is assessed at about $86,000 is what the average residential assessment is. Some of the proposed fee changes that are recommended in the budget. We're currently undergoing a water rate study, or water utility at least at this point. We are noticing a reduction in water sales, probably as a result of the economy as well as conservation efforts by the homeowners as well as some of the commercial industrial accounts that we have. So our revenues in our water utility aren't keeping pace with our operating costs as we would hope and as a result of that, we have begun the process of a rate study on our water and sewer rates for next year. We are proposing, as I indicated, increases in our inspection and recreation fees, which would generate about $15,000 in additional revenue for next year. And some of the other fees that we're proposing are just very minor, routine cost of living type increases. And lastly, the solid waste fees are being recommended for increase. And lastly, the solid waste fees are being recommended for increase. As I indicated earlier, when the state approved their budget for this past spring, they did increase our tipping fees for solid waste, which amounts to a $120,000 increase to the city. One of the other areas that we're experiencing some difficulty in is our recycling program. We used to sell our recycling material and actually used the proceeds of that to help fund our recycling program. There's essentially no market right now for glass, aluminum cans, some of the other recycling plastics that we pick up. We are still able to sell some of the paper products that we recycle, but essentially, we're giving away the other products, and as a result of that, we're not generating any income off of that. And because of that, our costs aren't being covered by the current fees that we're charging for the service. And we're recommending increasing the solid waste fee, $1.50 per month, from $11.50 to $13 per month, to help offset the tipping fee as well as the loss of revenue on the recycling program. Another change that we're recommending is increasing the yard waste stickers to $1.50 each. They're currently a dollar and a quarter. These are the little stickers that everybody has to put on their yard waste bags when they set out their grass clippings, what have you. And again, that's to help offset the cost of that program. Another change are the set-out fees for containers. We currently allow 10 containers that can be set out for the monthly fee that we charge. We're recommending we reduce that to five. And anybody that would set out any more than five, it would be a dollar per container over the five that they're allowed. We're also recommending that the yard waste pickup be changed from weekly to once a month for the months of May through October. We're still going to provide our fall leaf pickup at no additional charge, and we're also recommending eliminating the spring cleanup program that the city's offered the last several years, and that's a savings of about $14,000 by eliminating that program. Sort of where we go from here, as Larry indicated, there's a workshop scheduled for two weeks from tonight, on the 19th of October, at the Blount Library. It's scheduled to begin at 8:00 in the morning and last all day till 5:00 p.m. We're also having a public hearing that night on the budget, and if needed, we're certainly open for additional workshops if the council feels that's necessary. And by following this proposed calendar here, we are looking possibly for council to consider the budget on the first meeting in November, November 2nd. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to address any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Forrest?
I do have one request. Is it possible that we can provide it?
In Wisconsin. I can tell you that echoing City Manager Arf's comments, I too have had pretty close to 36 years in this industry, both in local government as well as in consulting for local government, and this is the most challenging year that I have seen local governments have to face in terms of their budgets. We recognize this as being a fact of life here several months ago, and to that end, we offered a series of free workshops for our clients around, we did four of these around the state, not knowing how many people would take us up on this thing. And I got to tell you, we had over 80-plus local officials at each one of these workshops, looking and sharing really with one another what they were experiencing in terms of struggling with trying to make ends meet in their budgets. And the kinds of things that you're talking about having to face with regard to some of these tough decisions that I saw in the presentation are exactly the kinds of things that many of your colleagues around the state are facing in terms of addressing not just some of the, what would be considered to be quality of life services, but even down to the essential basics of service that are absolutely needed in most communities. These things are being impacted by this budget situation, and what's driving it is a combination of factors, and the levy limit legislation is a factor. Certainly, state shared revenue is stagnant in most cases, if not declining. As was mentioned, the reduction in investment earnings driven by the economy, and certainly, in many cases, communities' tax bases have actually seen a decline in equalized value. And this is another problem that many communities are facing. And so it's going to be an interesting year upcoming in Wisconsin in terms of that budget climate, and if it means anything, I can tell you that what you're seeing is not the product of any bad management whatsoever. It's a product of the environment and some of the issues that all communities are facing in this state.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, item number 12 is motion for adjournment. Leavy?
Yes.
Ms. Jones, all in favor? Aye? Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Just over. My line.